I'm going to call this meeting to order at 7:02. I thank you all for coming out this evening. As I had mentioned, this is the first board meeting of the 2021-2022 school year. And as we have in our bylaws and as we do every year, this is the meeting in which we elect our executive board. So with that said, I am going to begin by, I will call attendance. So if you could just acknowledge that you're here by saying here. So let's start. Joe Adella? John Bonino? Greg Cava? Angela Masharello? Did I mess that really bad up? But why don't you correct me so that I can say it right? Macherulo, thank you. Alex McNaulson? Justin Ongley? Jennifer Pody? Lisa Roush? Candace Shisell? Did I say that correctly? Excellent. Julie Stewart? Pete Tagley? And Mary Weber? Excellent. We have everyone here and accounted for. We begin with our first item on the agenda, which is the election of officers. And we will be, I will quickly read to you all Policy 9121 that specifies how we go about this process. So, "The election of the chair moderated by the superintendent of schools. Such officers shall be elected from the board membership at the annual organizational meeting, at the first regular Board of Education meeting held each July, and shall remain in office until new officers elected at the next annual meeting, unless such officers cease to be members of the Boards of Education. If there is a vacancy amongst the officers during the course of the year, the board membership shall act promptly and elect a new officer to fill the vacancy. The superintendent of schools or designated agent shall call the annual organizational meeting to order and serve as the moderator for the election of the new Board of Education chair at the annual organizational meeting held each July. If the superintendent of schools and/or her designee is not present, the board shall elect a temporary chair by a majority vote. The temporary chair will preside over the meeting until the board elects the permanent chair. Good news, I'm here, we don't have to worry about that. The new chair shall take office immediately upon election. The board shall then elect a vice chair, a secretary, and a treasurer. The new officer shall take office immediately upon the completion of the elections. Board members shall vote by a paper ballot, and you will see those are before you at your tables. And the majority of the total membership of the board shall be required to constitute an election. If there are more than two nominees, and on the first ballot, no nominee receives a majority vote of the full membership, the nominee receiving the lowest number of votes shall be removed from the list of candidates before balloting again. Upon motion duly made and seconded, an officer of the board shall be removed by an office by a two-third vote of the total board membership voting by ballot." So at this time, I ask the board for a nomination for the 2021-2022 Board Chairman. Jen Pody?
Second.
I have, I have it nominated by Jen Pody and seconded by John Bonino. I'm going to ask if there are any additional nominations before we move to nominee statements. At this time, if I ask our nominee, Greg Cava, to please share a little bit about his thoughts and qualifications before we go into voting consideration.
Thousand Zoom meetings. No, it's been my, it's been my distinct privilege to serve as your chair for the last two years. I really think we are on to something here. This is the place, this is the school district that everybody wants to come to. 260 people, non-ag STEM, wanted to transfer and pay tuition to come to this school system. That should tell you something. Because we have a great administration, a great faculty, wonderful parents and great students, we are really pulling this off. We are providing the best education that can be had. And we aren't stopping here. I, after watching that arts program of our, of our, the visual arts program of our kids that I saw that was put on, I am just blown away. I'm blown away that a school this small can offer that rich a visual arts program. And we're not going to stop with visual arts. We're going to go to all of the arts. We're going to try to get these, these, finally, these theater and band programs and chorus programs, they can actually meet in person, I hope. And I'm hoping that we're going to be able to do that. And I'm hoping we're going to be able to see us get back to where we used to be. And we've got to get our humanities program up to the level of our astounding science program. And when that bloody planetarium is open, I want, I want that thing, I want to see us with some type of an astrophysics class in the school. I want to see clubs. I want to see some of our kids go down. I want to see at least two to three kids in the, in the, in the space camp in Huntsville, Alabama. I would really, if there's an interest, if our kids are interested, I want to see us go that step. And that's where we're headed. We're headed for the moon and the Mars. And we're head, we're really headed out there. And we're doing it because we have a board that's working hard, because you're out there in the community talking to people. And we have a great community and a great school system. And that's, I mean, frankly, I'm just lucky to be here.
All right, board members, at this time, you will notice that you have these four slips of paper in front of you. I'm going to ask that you find the one that said Chairman of the Board. Please cast your vote. Sue Haverly will come around to collect your num, your voting. Because these voting ballots are public record, and therefore, we need to hold them for public record.
Doing great. I'm so surprised.
At this time, Sue Haverly, our board recorder, is validating our ballots and the vote. 12 votes to none for Gregory Cava. It is unanimous. Our Board Chairman for the 2020-2021-2022 school year is Gregory J. Cava. Congratulations.
Thank you. Oh, I've got the power now. I'd be lucky not to hit myself. Okay, we're now going to move on to the election of the Office of Vice Chair. And I would like to, at this time, ask if there are any nominations for Vice Chair. Mary?
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Pody, please.
Jen Pody, is there a second? It's moved and seconded. Are there further nominations? Going once? Going twice? Going three times? We will now take a vote. Oh, actually, we have, you got the chance to talk. I am sorry.
Unmute. How's that? Is that better? This is my third term, so, starting my third term. So I've been serving for eight years. And I'll just piggyback a little of what Greg said. I love this region. I love this community. I feel passionate about the students and the staff. And I think that that's for me, my bottom line. So I'm honored to serve the board for eight years. And yeah, thank you.
At this point, we will ask you to vote.
At this point, we will ask you to vote, and Sue will come around and collect the ballots. Okay. Congratulations, our Vice Chair, Jen Pody. All right, we shall move on to an election of Secretary. Do we have a nomination? All right, Lisa nominated, is there a second? Seconded by Jen. Further nominations? Hearing none? Lisa, would you care to say anything? You're welcome to.
Well, I'm, I've, I've served as Secretary now. I think this is my third or fourth year. And it's a job I'm honored to do. It's certainly not as difficult as Chair or Vice Chair or Treasurer, but I dutifully take notes in minutes during executive sessions. So I'm honored for that job and to serve on the Executive Committee.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's now move on to voting. If you will vote with the green ballot for Secretary, and Sue will collect them. Congratulations. We will now move on to the election of Treasurer. Do I have a nomination? Alex? Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Are there further nominations? Hearing none? John? You have a word first?
Yes, thanks for your confidence in me. I, my interest in Region 12 Finance has probably started when I moved here in 1979. Every year, I would look at the budget and say, "How can this budget keep rising and rising?" And, and after four years on the Finance Committee and two years as Treasurer now, I have a better understanding as to where the dollars go. And it's, I find it very interesting. But my ambition, before I leave the board, is to hopefully see the budget reduced, at least by a little bit. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, John. At this time, please cast your yellow ballot for Treasurer. Yes? Uh oh, well, you can always meet with Sue after the meeting and make sure those get signed, for the record. Congratulations, John. All right, before we move on to public comment on agenda items, I would like to welcome the two new members of our board. Angela Maciarrulo. If I don't get that right, I'm going to be in trouble. And, and Candace Shishel. Shishel, would either of you like to say anything at this point? I'd be happy to hear from you. Tell us a little about yourself.
Thank you. It's a pleasure and an honor to be serving. I am a longtime Bridgewater resident, three boys through Burnham, and now one left in the middle school, two in the high school. One will be graduating this coming up year. So I'm excited to, now that they're at an age where they don't require as much attention, maybe more attention, to start giving back.
Candace?
Hi, I'm Candace Shisell. I am a teacher. So I ran the board because they care a lot about education. So I just finished my ninth year in the classroom. I have a Master's in Curriculum and Struggling UConn. And I am working on my school administrator education right now at Southern. So I've taken a lot of coursework on educational law and curriculum and lots of kind of relevant, relevant topics. I have three kids in the schools. Agnes, my oldest, is going into seventh. And then I have two boys, Henry and Vincent.
Well, we are thrilled to have both of you on the board. Thank you, and welcome. And feel free to raise your hand.
I'm third and fourth.
Okay. We'll move on to public comment on agenda items. Are there any members of the public?
Really excited to be here.
Who would like to speak?
Supporting the work and the mission of our district.
I don't know how to raise my hand. I would like to speak.
Jessica Cassini?
Yes.
Please unmute yourself, and while you are unmuted, go ahead and talk.
Thank you.
I'd like to hear from you.
Thank you. So I'm just going to be looking down because I'm reading, so I apologize. But good evening, my name is Jessica Cassini. I am a mom to three beautiful, healthy children. Thank you so much for letting me speak tonight. Tonight, my message is very clear. I do believe that we need to unmask our children. At the very least, I believe we need to give parents back their right to choose. If a family opts to wear a mask, I really think that's great. But if a family like ours feels comfortable not wearing them, I do believe it comes down to personal choice. And I apologize, I'm shaking a little bit. I don't do this. According to the CDC, 4,029 children between the ages of one and 17 died from unintentional injury back in 2019. That same year, 1,646 children died by suicide, 1,348 by homicide. Influenza and pneumonia also claimed 278 lives that year. And in 2018, there were 277 deaths. As of June 23rd of this year, there have been only 324 deaths due to COVID in that same age group. I don't mean to say only, as if those lives didn't matter or that they will not be mourned by many for years to come. I say that only to put things into perspective. Many children have contracted COVID, but by and large, we can say that they are almost completely remain unaffected. And this is very important to highlight. COVID is not the death sentence that CNN has portrayed for the last 16 months. Random controlled trials are prospective studies that measure the effectiveness of a new intervention or treatment. Although no study is likely on its own to prove causality, randomization reduces bias and provides rigorous tool to examine the cause-effect relationships between an intervention and an outcome. In April and May of 2020, there was an RCT study done in Denmark on the efficacy of mask-wearing. The conclusion that was drawn was that the recommendation to wear surgical masks to supplement other public health measures did not reduce COVID-19 infection rates among wearers by more than 50% in a community with modest infection rates, some degree of social distancing and uncommon general use of masks. The data was compatible with lesser degrees of self-protection. In essence, we're, masks in essence were as effective as social distancing and other measures. Not only does the gold standard for studies show that masks do not provide the protection that we're being told constantly, what about the impact to our children's mental health? I can use my own daughter, for instance, Lily. She's 10 and a half, she's outgoing, vibrant, intelligent, rarely complains, and I hardly ever see her cry. Just a month after school started last fall, my beautiful girl broke down in our kitchen saying that we didn't know, as parents, what it was like to go to school and to be forced to wear a mask all day, that we have no idea how difficult it is. Lily went on to say, "Sometimes she wishes that she wasn't alive." Can you imagine as a parent, hearing your child say that? "Because I could barely contain my composure." Our son Landon will be starting third grade in the fall, and he came home every day with a soaking wet mask. Can you imagine the amount of bacteria that is just sitting on his face all day? Parents in Georgia and Florida did actually send their children's masks off to a lab to be looked at, freshly laundered in the morning, worn only for one school day, and they found pneumonia bacteria, staph infection bacteria, among many others. I believe there was 13 or 15 different bacterias. I just believe this is unacceptable. Or how about at recess? My children were given frisbees and balls to play with outside, yet they were reprimanded when they threw them to their friends. Why were they given these balls and these frisbees if they couldn't actually play with their friends? I just, I don't understand it. Yet those same kids can play on a playscape and touch everything that the other children are touching. It just doesn't make sense. I call this COVID logic. Our youngest child, Ellie, was supposed to start preschool at the REACH program this year. At this point, I'm almost certain I'm going to pull her from the enrollment. When we went for a tour, there were little circles on the floor where each three- and four-year-old is expected to sit all day and play with a bin of toys, not playing with each other, but in a little circle on the floor. What is the point of preschool if these kids are wearing masks all day and sitting alone? They can't see their friends' faces or expressions? They can't make friends, they can't play. The Unmask Our Children movement is not anti-anything. It is simply fighting for our children's most basic right to breathe fresh air. I can tell you, my children haven't worn a mask outside of school since all of this began, and we have all remained unhealthy, we have all remained healthy. I find it very hard to grasp that after a beautiful summer spent with friends and going everywhere maskless, that they're going to be forced to put one back on. I know that I'm not alone in this feeling. Governor Lamont is asking to extend his emergency powers, yet today's daily positivity rate is 0.61%. Could anyone explain to me where the emergency is? COVID is not going anywhere. It is the new flu. It's going to be here for many years. Thousands of people die each year from the flu, children included, and yet masks have never been mandated. I think we have lost sight that we live in the United States of America, land of the free and the brave. It certainly doesn't seem like that anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who would like to address the board on a matter on our agenda?
Hi, I would like to speak.
If you do, please. Erin?
Yeah.
Okay. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say that I was really moved by what you just said, Jessica. I agree with you, I've never met you. Okay, we're collaborating here, but I'm here really for the same reason. And you just very beautifully articulated a lot of things that I would say if I were more organized, I'm going to just make it, you know, more brief than my last, my last talk here. But I really would like to implore the board to consider unmasking the kids this fall, or like Jessica said, at least allowing for that option, that choice to be made by families. I ask you to consider the following points as you set policy for the upcoming year. Asymptomatic spreading is extremely rare. This has been stated even by the most vocal proponents of vaccines. Children and young adults are not at a very high risk of getting and therefore spreading COVID. I know it does happen, but it's not, statistically, it's rare. Children who exhibit symptoms should simply stay home from school, as kind of as it's always been, but maybe with some heightened levels of attention given to that. That's not that hard to do, and it doesn't really infringe upon people's rights to simply try to make sure that sick kids aren't in school. If the COVID vaccine, gene therapy, whatever it is, if it works, then aren't those who have gotten that vaccine protected? And if they're not providing protection, why are we encouraging and even coercing people at this point to take these experimental vaccines? I don't understand that, it doesn't make sense to me. Mask-wearing has many adverse side effects, as you've just heard. These studies have been done, and they're continuing to be done. There's a long list of health dangers, including lowered oxygen levels. The kids are exhaling, you know, into these masks and breathing in carbon dioxide. The, there's strep, staph, all kinds of other bacteria. You know, that they are just, they've got these dirty masks on their faces. This is the reason we didn't send our kids to Region 12 schools last year is because I couldn't stand the thought of having them in that kind of environment all day, every day. This doesn't even touch on the psychological and emotional harm that Jessica touched upon, which is definitely present and heartbreaking to see these kids have to endure this and to see the level of support given by adults for the kids enduring this, you know, as if it's kind of a badge of bravery or, I can't explain the way I feel about it, that like, we're really harming these kids, I believe. And yet, not too many adults seem to be speaking up for them. You know, they haven't been proven to provide this protection that everybody assumes that they're, that they're providing. They were really, the surgical masks were made for surgeries to prevent transmission of things. And with all the emphasis that's put on science right now in our culture, there's just a lot of refusal to acknowledge legitimate scientific questions and arguments, like those that have just been stated. And that's because I believe there's a difference between approved science, agenda-driven science, and independent science. We are all educated people here, we're parents, educators, administrators. We care about these kids. I think we have an obligation to use discernment in situations like this. It's my opinion that true leadership requires a willingness to resist going with the flow or taking the path of least resistance. This top-down trend that's going on is really frightening. And obediently complying to guidance set by government agencies, such as the CDC, which is basically fed and funded by pharma and all these other industries that have a conflict of interest, is, it's beyond me that people aren't seeing what's going on. So I don't mean to sound like, you know, a crazy person here, but I think actually I'm thinking quite logically. Just, can we please stop encouraging the segregation and discrimination? Stop promoting policies that aren't really based in sound reasoning? I want our beautiful children to breathe fresh oxygen, 100% oxygen, smile at each other, laugh together. I've got a girl going into kindergarten, little Julianne, you know, I, I won't send her because I need her to have facial expression recognition with her teacher and, and her classmates. Without that, she won't develop in the way that I know I need to raise her. So I'm not alone. I know there are a lot of parents out there that feel the way I do, and they haven't spoken up because they don't want to be the squeaky wheel. But if this mask thing gets pushed this fall, I think you're going to lose a lot of really good families in this district, and I would hate to see that happen. Sorry, I did go a little longer than I anticipated, but thank you for listening. Unmute and my video on.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who would like to address us? I see people, but you need to raise your hand if you're, okay. Jessica Granger? Or at least that's the name on the screen. I hope that's who it is.
Yes, that's me. Hello, everybody, and the Board of Ed. I'm not going to take a lot of time because I cannot say anything better than Jessica Cassini or Erin Walrath just said. Everything that they said- Just said, um, everything that they said rang true to me and my family. And if kids are being quite required to go back to school with masks this school year, we will be pulling them out. Um, it was a, a horrible school year, having to deal with the masks, kids not getting mask breaks. When they were supposed to and um just being in this disgusting mask all day long. You send them to school clean and they come home gross and face irritations and they're hot. And they're not able to play and learn and express themselves, and we're not going through that again. Um, I know there are other families that feel the same. Um, and uh, you know, Erin and Jessica really, you know, hit the nails on the head and I echo. Um, every single one of their sentiments and experiences this past school year. And we have three kids that will be um hopefully um in the school system this year. And um, it's the reason why we moved here to this region and I start my daughter. Uh, will be going into Chapag for sixth grade this year. Um, we have a, a son in seventh and one still remaining in Booth. And I started advocating for my eleven-year-old daughter to um be in this district and move to this area back when she was in kindergarten. When I spoke about the start of AgSTEM and went to all the hearings and all the, the public meetings to speak for it. To speak for the region. Um, and it would be a incredible shame that our kids get pulled because of this nonsense of them having to wear masks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Great, Ms. Granger. What town are you from?
Roxbury.
Roxbury and Ms. Walruth? What town are you?
Bridgewater.
Bridgewater and Ms. Cassini?
Roxbury.
Thank you very much. We like to keep track of that for our, uh, our minutes, so thank you, thank you so much. Uh, is there any other member of the public who would like to uh address the board tonight? If you are, please appear and raise your hand so I can tell that you do, okay?
You have Deidre.
Ms. Patterson?
Hey, I'm Jessica Patterson. I'm a Roxberian resident and a former teacher at Chapag. Can you hear me okay? Okay, cuz my um system shows that it's a bad reception. Um, I'm also um speaking on behalf of unmasking our children. I do not have any children in the school system, but I know a lot of them and uh personally know one child in particular. Who uh has a really hard challenge wearing a mask all day. And um, as a, as an educator, I believe that it is a huge distraction to learning. And also uh reiterating a lot of what has been said before me. You know, taking away from their social interactions uh with their teachers and their friends. Um, and it's just plain out unhealthy. I personally have um health challenges wearing a mask all day and I have not been teaching. Um, and I would not be able to teach right now having to wear a mask all day long. I, I could not physically do it. And I know that there's a lot of other people um that are like me, but um. Uh, especially children need to be um free to breathe and express themselves. And to learn without this distraction. Um, it's a distraction to learning and to their health. Um, it's, it's a, it's causing a lot of adverse effects. Um, and I would just ask you to please consider unmasking our children for this uh upcoming school year. Thank you.
Do we just speak or do we wait for you to acknowledge our hands?
And I Steve, Deirdre, Deirdre Daly, I see your hand is up. Please go.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Deirdre Daly, Roxbury. I have two children in school. One is a fifth grader in Booth and one is a seventh grader in Chapag. Both girls are historically very healthy. Um, when other kids were bringing rotavirus, strep. Other illnesses to school. My kids fortunately remains healthy. Just as they remain healthy throughout the pandemic where we continue to take horseback riding lessons. Uh, showing horses, roller skating in public, ice skating in public. We traveled. We did, we went to restaurants, we went to church, we did everything. I have an international company. Where while everybody was watching the impeachment and the Democratic Convention. My guys were actually in Wuhan when this all broke out. My guys were also actually in northern Italy when it broke out. My guys were in the Middle East when it broke out. I could tell you everyone in my family remains safe, no one had COVID. And everyone in my company, which is in New York, remains healthy, as did their families, okay? I am an American. I believe I am responsible for myself and those around me. I am not responsible for every single person in this country. It is my duty to take care of myself, my family, to make sure we are healthy and taken care of. That said, I would like to thank Megan Bennett and her team because I think you did an awesome job this year. Keeping the kids in school. The three months that we spent with distance learning was a disaster at the end of two thousand nineteen uh twenty. Between March and June. That was a wasted three months. I was so happy to hear that the kids were gonna be in school and they pretty much for the most part. Were in the entire school year. Great job. However, I think the masking is not necessary. I think it does a lot of damage mentally. It does it damage physically and also to their learning. Pe- human beings listen not only with their ears, they listen with their eyes and their mouth. And you could do a test. All you have to do is cover your mouth and watch a person. You'll find yourself asking, what are they saying? What are they saying? It's because you look and you actually read their lips more than you realize. These kids are in school for a short period of their life. This is their future. If they don't learn now at these early years, it's going to affect them for the rest of their life, and I don't think the region is ready for that liability. I, I strongly am opposed to the masks. There are too many reasons. You could get into the politics. You could get into all the different scientific reason. The CDC has changed their guidelines over and over, and quite often, they've been wrong. And we could all agree or disagree on why they've been wrong, but the fact of the matter is, this is still America. As of today, it is still the United States of America and we each have the right to make our own choices. I don't tell other people to, how to live their lives. I don't tell them how to. Manage their health when I know the things that they're doing could put my health at risk or the health of my children. They do what they do. I do what I do. And for me, it's worked. I don't think the school should continue to tell our children to sit there separated from their friends. Wear a mask like they're, they're criminals and, and you're basically Muslim. It's causing mental distress. It's causing anxiety. I could tell you, I'm having a big problem with my older daughter right now. Who early on had a propensity for anxiety and she had seemed to get over it, and I can't even get her on a horse today. When she does really well and everything she does now, she's anxious, she's afraid, she's wondering. If it's okay. My other daughter is also questioning everything. This is damaging them emotionally and mentally. The CDC is simply there for guidance, and again, they flip-flop depending on who's telling them to say what. And that's a fact because there is no scientific data proving that masks help. It didn't help, and actually there was a study done. It did not help with the Spanish flu. The study showed that most people died from bacterial pneumonia because of people wearing masks during the Spanish flu. The masks don't necessarily help. It only helps maybe keep the dirty people from spreading germs. But you know what? The human body is designed to create antibodies to protect us. That's part, we have the best defense system in the world. Maybe elderly people, they should wear a mask because they're not making antibodies, but these kids need to make antibodies. They need to be able to be kids. They need to be free. They need to know that they are Americans. And I'm really opposed, and I gotta tell you, if you have any doubt on how these parents feel. All you have to do is ask your nurses what happened when they heard that Lamont was gonna sign the bill about the religious exemption. I guarantee you those nurses in each of your schools were flooded with religious exemptions suddenly. Merely because of the vaccine. And you may have some parents who are vehemently opposed to the vaccine. Who, and then you have some who are not opposed to the vaccine. But I could tell you, there are a hell of a lot more people opposed to masking their kids from both sides of the spectrum. The parents are talking about homeschooling. What are you gonna do if we all pull the kids out of school? Are you gonna pay for our homeschooling? What are you gonna do if we said, all sends our kids to school without masks? Cuz I could tell you, I burned mine. I am not sending my kids to school with masks. Are you gonna ostracize my kids? Are you gonna discriminate against my kids? Are you gonna kick out my kids? Are you gonna do more mental and emotional damage? I really think region twelve has to think about what you're doing to these children. And what will happen if we all band together and say, hey, enough is enough. So, that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Uh, I see that the person who's named Julie Flood has her hand up. Is that, is that you? Oh, have you frozen? I'm sorry, Julie, do you wanna speak?
Yes, please. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I can't hear you. I think you, um, your sound isn't on. I don't know what's wrong.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you identify yourself and also say where you're from?
Yes, Julie Flood, Washington, Connecticut. I'm sorry, I don't have a great, um. I don't have a great connection, but I'll do my best. Thank you, Deirdre. You said a lot. And I'm just here to echo um some of these parents, and where there is risk, there must be choice. And I'm sure that a lot of you have read um the recent uh JAMA report that clearly states. The harm caused by breathing in carbon dioxide. And that's what we're asking our kids to do while they wear those masks. Um, you know, adults can make decisions for themselves. When they want to uh take extra precaution and, and cover their face, but children. Really, the CDC said themselves are a zero percent risk when it comes to COVID nineteen and a zero percent transmission. So why are we asking our kids to mask? The CDC also went so far to say. Um, school was the safest place to be for adults and kids. So where there is risk, there must be choice, and I think there might be parents that wanna continue to mask their kids. They'll wanna give them the injection, even though there's been a lot of studies and a lot of news lately about harm. Um, and some of us are gonna decide not to do that because we don't think it's necessary. Especially when it was such a low risk for kids in the first place. So what I'm asking is um to have a choice. Let parents decide what to do with their kids. Um, let them go to school, let them not wear a mask if that's what their choices. I think you'll be surprised. How many parents choose to send their kids back to school? Thank you for your time.
I'm sorry, thank you. Do we have anyone else who would like to uh address the board this evening? Um, it, when you're finished, can you please take your hand down so I, we don't get um confused by that? And that way whoever's raised their hand will know that they, they wanna speak. I don't see anyone else. If you do wanna speak, please use the raise hand feature in the, in the reactions section of the website. That'll make it easier for me to spot you. I do not see anyone else. Does anyone else see anyone that appears to wanna speak? I, I don't see anyone. Erin? Oh, actually, Erin Light, please, go ahead, Erin. You're, you're muted. Please unmute yourself. You can, you can speak. You have the floor.
Hey, guys, hold on one second. It's actually, it's Erin's husband, Matt.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I just, uh, I just sat down and I'm eating a bowl of cereal, but I wanted to just get my hand up and say that I am um in support of not wearing masks. This coming year, um. I don't see, you know, I think that everyone always says, what about the teachers? The teachers are vaccinated. I don't think there's a risk there. I think that wearing masks has done a lot of harm to the kids. I've talked to a lot of friends of mine who are teachers. Um, I know that a lot of kids are hiding behind their masks. I think that this is gonna have a long-term social effect on our kids. And um, I just don't see anything, I don't see any reason for it. And um. Yeah, ki- kids haven't been affected by it the way that people think they are, and uh they're being affected in a negative way. So anyway, I just think, um, you know, if the decision is made that our kids gotta mask up. Um, or be forced to vaccinate, which I think is dangerous for kids right now. Um, we're, we're probably gonna be pulling our, you know, we're, we're considering pulling two more kids out of the school system that's starving for kids. And I love our school system and I like our teachers and I think, uh, you know, I, I don't wanna do that. So I'm uh, I'm hoping to just impress upon the board, uh. To, 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 you know, to allow our kids to come to school without masks, have a normal childhood, a normal school upbringing, so. That's all. I just wanted to get my hand up. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Matt, we, we lost you. Do you, you, Matt, you're from Roxbury?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, no, that's okay.
And we've got, we've got a student in Booth and a student in Spog.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? If so, please use the raise hand feature in your reactions or otherwise get your hand up there and wave it. So I can tell that you, you wanna address us. I do not see anyone else. All right. Seeing no one else, we're going to move on with the agenda. Thank you all for taking the time to address us.
Yes, we will have the masking decision in our agenda in the near future. Um, as you'll hear in the updates for COVID, we're just gonna talk about receiving the CDC, I think, as we gather more information. But at this point, we have made no decision regarding masking. So, so the question being the legal aspect of the decision, that's exactly why we're not just taking, you know, right now, we've received one piece of information. We still are waiting for, for many more to come together before we're able to take a stance one way or the other. And as you're hearing and um, you know, the surveys that have been out, we are hearing a lot of people who don't wanna have the masks. But we're certainly taking everything into consideration as we make those decisions. I, I'm not. So, so the question is about if we could be sued if somebody gets COVID through the schools? Is that your question? So, so right now we don't know the legal implications regarding masking and, and requiring it. Um, but right now, much of the guidance that we've done last year really had to do with what were the executive orders and what was put out. Um, so there's the difference between the mandates versus what are recommendations, and we don't know what direction that's gonna go into yet.
All right, anyone else? John?
Yeah, um, we have to.
Yeah, um, we have to keep in mind, this is a statewide movement. The legis- there was a rally at the legislature today. People are demanding that that the kids not have to wear their masks when they go back to school. The Connecticut State Department of Education is gonna have meetings, I believe it's every Tuesday from now until school starts on this very topic. So it's a very incendiary topic. Go out to Watertown, Thomaston, you see the art signs. Take off the masks. So, you know, I don't, you know, I don't know where it's gonna end, but it's, uh, it's very controversial.
Pete?
The question of whether there's legal footing to sue us for a mandate. Right now, there, there is not. But that said again, like we've just received the guidance on Friday. So as our legal counsel, as the state goes across and, and we look at what are the rights and requirements and what does the school have a right to do? I don't have those answers yet, and this is where I'm very cautious not to put anything out that we don't have all of the answers to. So this is really the point where we are in the fact gathering portion of this decision because of that, we have to take a look at not just what are the desires, the, the implications socially of our kids, the implications of the, the law, the implications of health, the, the guidance that we had before. So everything that comes together is, is where we start to get to the point where I'd feel confident making that decision, and we're not there yet. Absolutely. And, you know, I, I don't wanna take too much fire away from my COVID update, but quite frankly, not masking can be a decision that we make the day before. Versus social distancing has much more ramifications for us ordering furniture, getting the design of the school. So I, I am absolutely aware that the masks are a huge decision for our families. And so I wanna make certain that we're giving those choices to them. But for us as a school, as we're designing and what we have to order and how we have to plan, that social distancing means a whole lot because I've gotta figure out where we're putting kids, the sizes of classrooms, the desks that we have to use. So that has much more material impact for us right now. But I don't want to downplay the importance of this mass decision. So we're gonna continue to take all of the information. We're gonna continue to get legal counsel on this and hopefully get as much information as we can in order to make the decision that allows us to safely run. A lot of, everything that we look at is, is really risk, you know? And at what point are we taking the risk? At what point parents take the risk? And that's where we get guidance and more information. I, I guess we will have a presentation and when we decide what we're going to do and, and that decision, once we are able to make it, I will be able to present exactly why we're making that decision, and I don't have those answers yet.
Okay. We shall move on to the consent agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to take the me- the meeting minutes of June 14th or May 24th off of the consent agenda to make modifications? Mary?
I just wanted to amend the June 14th minutes. Spring Hill is allowed two events instead of three that we say in that. And Jahana is spelled wrong for our, our Congresswoman. It's J-A-H-A-N-A.
All right, and that's June 14th?
Yes.
All right, is there anyone that objects to removing June 14th from the consent agenda to be so modified? Is there anyone that objects to the modification? Is there anyone who objects to putting it back on the consent agenda as modified? Okay, in that case, it'll be modified and that will be the minutes if, if, since we, no one's objected to that. Okay, thank you, Mary. Anyone else on the minutes? All right, those are now adopted as the minutes of the board. Update on COVID-19 and vaccinations.
All right. Well, as we've said many times, the CDC did release their recommendations on Friday. John, as you had mentioned, the State Department will start holding their meetings. They've actually canceled tomorrow's meeting because they need to, they need to dissect the information. So starting on July 20th, we will be having those weekly meetings. I'm also going to be returning to the weekly meetings with our Department of Health and our medical advisors. So we do have those forthcoming, and we will get back into the routine of reviewing the information we have and getting all the voices to help make the decision. Within the CDC guidance, the part that made me happy is, as it talked about layering mitigation strategies, one of the first ones was that the six feet can be three feet. And I think that is a welcome change. We have had the gift of square footage. We've been able to maximize the six feet, but I will tell you, it is not optimal for, for education. Things that you've heard our parents talk about, it's, it's true, there is an impact. Our children don't know how to talk to each other anymore during lessons. It became a bit of a lecture style. And so being able to close some of that distance, being able to utilize some of our spaces differently is a welcomed opportunity for us. I think it'll introduce more learning. Again, we're, we're excited to open up the passing that distance and knowing that we can do that safely. So that was one great thing to take away. The other parts that in the CDC guidance that it did pronounce regardless of our decision for masking, that if there is, if somebody is fully vaccinated, they are not subject to quarantine. So it is one where we know that there may be some disruptions to education depending on who's vaccinated and who's not. We will have to certainly take a look at all of those things when we're looking at the conditions for learning. But again, we want to capture any space and anything that we can start to close in on in order to gain some normalcy. The other thing that came out of CDC guidance was the fact that if you are outdoors, you do not need to be masked. We still have our tents. We still have access to our pavilions. And I think that was something that when we started the school year and even into the spring, we absolutely utilized the outdoors as much as possible. And I think to know that we can get our kids out there and they don't have to be masked during that education time. You think about where we were last year in the fall. The belief was that COVID acted like the flu. And so the way that we were designing everything was as if we were mitigating the flu. And now we know so much more. And so to make certain that we are not being stagnant with once, what we once knew was how we needed to operate, I think we need to evolve with that. And so part of that evolution is certainly capturing back some of the distance where we are safely able to. So in the board updates, you all received that CDC guidance. It is a wonderful light read. But I do recommend that people look at that. Again, it is the takeaways. We do not have additional information from the state. We do not have additional information from our attorneys yet. Everybody is right now evaluating what is the first blush at information of how we can start to design next year. So one of the things that I'm going to be sending out, we sent out a survey at the end of the year to our families to talk about what happened last year, to look at our reopening plan, to make certain we were getting feedback. Now I can tell you of the people who did respond. The, I wanna say the, the desire to unmask absolutely came through in the number of the survey returns. But I will be sending that survey out once again to families. I think people had enough of me at the end of the year. I think all the weekly updates, they did not wanna hear another email from me. So hopefully reopening that survey opportunity through an email will get more voices behind it as well. But certainly the other part that I am most proud was the amount of survey responses that celebrated our staff, that celebrated being in school, that celebrated the fact that we weren't quarantining entire classrooms, that we were thoughtful, that we utilized prudence when we were making some of these decisions. And so we're gonna take some of those positive things and make certain we replicate that, but also taking some of the feedback that we can do better. And I will tell you, we need to do better. I don't want anybody to think that we took last year and are gonna laminate the plans because that was good. It, it wasn't. It was our point in evolution of where we were. But I don't think it was the best educational experience. And so now as we continue to balance safety and that educational experience is where we now enter into that next phase of a reopening plan. We did have to put forth a reopening plan by June 23rd in order to qualify for the American Recovery Act Plan. That enabled us to receive the $236,000 over the next three years. That's not 236 each three years, that's cumulatively over the three years. But the things that you'll see on our reopening plan was that we were pending more guidance from the CDC in that plan. So the next iteration of that plan is due by August 23rd. I hope to have a plan out sooner than that. We will replicate what we did last year, which is holding the school-based meetings once we have the reopening plan complete. We wanna make certain parents have answers to all of their questions. This is, again, the situation. We want parents to have all of the information to make the decisions that are best for them. I'm gonna make the decision, you are gonna make the decision that is best for the entire Region 12, but we don't wanna take away that some families need to make decisions that are best for them. And so we will certainly make sure, and they have all of that information as they are going into the next school year. So that concludes my COVID update. I will entertain any questions.
Mary?
I just wanted you, I, I just wanted you to tell me again what, what they said about people that are vaccinated within the school.
If, if you are fully vaccinated, so right now, the way it says is that if you are fully vaccinated, you do not have to quarantine for an exposure to COVID-19. It does not go so much to say that fully vaccinated means you can go without a mask, but it does hint to that. So that's where we're waiting to see what does that mean for our school system.
Thanks.
Essentially, it talks to unvaccinated people in masks, so.
Yeah, did you say we had a CDC handout in our packet?
Not in your packet, in the board update this week, the link was located within that.
Okay, thank you.
If you go to the CDC website, you will find that information.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thank you very much. All right, let me, now that I'm unmuted, let me say that it's now, we're now moving on to reports and recognition. The first item is my report. The first item on my agenda is the board committee signup sheet. I'm gonna pass this around. There are several committees on the sheet, and I would ask that everybody sign up for one or more committees. You can sign up for as many as you like. And if you would like to, whoops, if you would like to, if you would like to think you might like to chair the committee, please put a check mark in the chair box, and I will appoint chairpersons. I will appoint people to these committees. I don't think we've ever not appointed someone to a committee who wanted to serve on it. So if you wanna serve, you're in. I'm just gonna pass this in each direction. Please, please fill that out and get it to me as soon as you can. Um, okay. Second item. I'm glad we had an opportunity to hear from people who have concerns about the continued masking, and I know that this is gonna be a difficult thing for us. But whatever decision is made, it's not gonna be a trivial, a trivial decision because the, the effects of someone who, even, children do get COVID, and the older they are, the more likely they are, I think, to get it. And the problem you've got is, is that the effects of getting it are pretty severe. And so obviously, risk decisions will have to be made, and we're going to listen to the various views on it in order for us to do this. And I know, I'm confident the superintendent will come to us with a proper decision on this. Nobody wants people to be masked a minute longer than they have to. Like, no, I don't. And I want, I would nothing, love nothing more than to see this building, for example, get back to the, get back to the mall being properly furnished and kids out there interacting and being together and doing that. And I'd like to see that in all of our schools. So I think we, we are sympathetic to that, to that concept. And, but I want, the one thing I would point out is, is that as miserable as online education was for the last couple of months of last year, in this past year, we were in-person education from the first day the school system opened through the end of it. We had very short period of time where we had kids in some schools that were out, but by and large, we managed to do it. We, we did it because we're small. We did it because we're smart. One of the things we did is we were very careful, and we had very cooperative people that helped us make sure, and we had exposures that they got dealt with. And as a result of that, we were able to keep the schools open. So I hope people understand that this is something we're gonna look for help from the community to get there. And I can't help but thinking, the sooner that everybody is vaccinated, the sooner this, we're gonna have fewer problems and be able to have more opportunities to open. And I know that people have concerns about that as well. But I think, you know, that's how we're gonna get there fastest. I think that's really, I think that's really it. But in any event, I, the other thing I wanted to point out is I had the opportunity to, and I think I mentioned it to you guys in a, in a, in a email that I sent today. I had an opportunity to finally sit down and review the, the materials presented on visual arts by, by Ms. Wright. And it was absolutely stunning, absolutely stunning presentation. I, I didn't wanna comment on it or, or do anything until I had seen the whole thing and seen every work of art that our kids did. It, it really told me that we really need, we really are producing great results here in this area. We need to do more to make sure that the arts are, are, are front and center in our curriculum. And I was just amazed. And if you have a chance, go look at those. It, it, I mean, there's a, to look and see the way kids see the world, and the way the kids see the world that we have, especially during a period of time when the world isn't exactly a fun place the last year and a half. It's, it's stunning, absolutely stunning, and I urge you to do it. I, I think this is, this is part of what we need to do. I said earlier what my, my views are. I, I really want us to be the school system that everyone wants to go to. And I think we have the ability to do that. I think we have the critical mass. So in any event, I just wanted to mention that. Now I'm gonna move on with the superintendent talk.
All right. Well, it has been a great start to our extended school year program and kindergarten readiness. And when I say great start, I mean, it pretty much has gone in line with the rest of the school year. So we had to cancel our kindergarten readiness and summer school on Friday because of the fact of the large rain amounts. And being that Washington primary school is in a flood zone, it became a decision of saturation and recognizing what our grounds could not handle. So kids came back today. Everything is good. We were able to, but I can tell you that Friday, we did have some bouts of loss of power at Central Office. So it turned out to be an okay decision, but it's one that you don't typically have to call. I don't wanna say a rain day, but here we were calling that just because that's the way things are going. But I do have to say thank you to Ally O'Hara, who is, you know, being the, the leader of the program. She really has done an amazing job organizing both the extended school year and our kindergarten readiness. But I can also tell you that our soon-to-be kindergarteners are just enjoying their time with the teachers. We have organized them, so students who are going to WPS have one teacher, those going to Burnham and Booth have another teacher. And part of that is because we want them to meet some of the friends that they're gonna walk to the, into the school buildings with. Additionally, they have field trips. They will be going on a field trip to Burnham. They will be going on a field trip to Booth so they can see all of the schools. Because all of this and what we're doing with our kindergarten readiness is preparing our students to be socially, emotionally ready to come into kindergarten in the fall. So it has gone off very well. So, it has gone off very well. Drop-off pickup is taking a little bit longer, we're getting much more efficient. But we're certainly very appreciative of the patience of our families. I do want to just update you on a couple of things that we have going on. We have a number of facilities projects that, as you know, as the board, you have voted for and are underway right now. If you looked up when coming into Chapag, you will see our roof is under construction right now. That roof that we've talked about for approximately four years is actually being taken care of. We have been getting pictures and up-to-date photos, and even with the heavy rains, they have been able to make some significant progress. We're anticipating the completion of that project at the end of July. The Burnham School will have gutters temporarily, they will be aluminum. When we finally do the actual fix, it will be the copper gutters. But right now, there is a supply shortage. And quite frankly, the gutters are causing issues with flooding inside the building. So we're going to create the temporary, so it may not look the way that it will finally look once the roof is done and we can get that permanent solution. So I just want to make certain everybody is aware the temporary solution you're going to see for the remainder of the year, which is aluminum gutters. We also have some new carpets that are going to be installed at Booth and Burnham. Don't worry, the Burnham rug will not be installed until the flooding is fixed. But, you know, and this is what we are seeing with a lot of these projects, is that one thing needs to happen before we're able to introduce the other things and fixes and solutions. For example, right now, the floors at, in our agri-science program are needing to be redone. So, there are some projects that we have in those areas that now have to wait. We have been able to get the outlet fixes for the welding shop, so they're in hand, they're ready to go. But again, recognizing that we have to solve our floor issue before we can get somebody in to solve that. So it's just, it's a layering of solutions. And because of that, we, Donna Larry has been coordinating our custodians to make certain that we can leverage our resources. So, right now, Burnham and Booth are going through their thorough clean. Then they will be shut down, so that way we can get those custodians over to WPS, which is right now being completely utilized, so we can do that really fast clean before we start school. And also recognizing that Chapag, now that we have agri-science floors that may not be completed, as soon as we had hoped, it will probably be the end of this month, if not the very beginning of next, that we can get everything cleaned and looking ready. So, we are trying to do a swarm of custodian work, so that way we can take care of every single school. But it, it is definitely a team effort, and so I appreciate the coordination of Donna Larry in putting that together. So, you're, you'll see, I don't know if, when you drove up, if you noticed, our field hockey now has a brand-new scoreboard, it is, it is up, it is lit, it looks beautiful. There are no longer those extension cords going from the building to the scoreboard. It is, it is up and beautiful, and water tank is being installed. So, many of these promises are now being delivered on, and we are very excited because these are long-term solutions. These are no longer Band-Aids, we are really coming up with the fixes. So I also, I want to thank everyone who gave Kim Gallo a well-deserved and well-earned recognition. But I needed to give a special thank you to Joan Lodson, who made certain that Kim received a proclamation for her outstanding efforts in education from the legislation. And that was read at Kim's retirement party. And so I really, I, I appreciate everything that the community has done in order to recognize the leadership that has happened here within the school district. But, and now, we set our sights on the future and next chapter for Chapag. Don Schels has made his seamless transition to leadership, and he had officially started on July 1st, so don't feel bad emailing him now because now he's ours. But I, I have to say, it has been a warm welcome, and we are looking forward to, to great things and Chapag continuing its, its history and growing. So, without any questions for my updates? John?
In your weekly update, you mentioned something about a new sign for Chapag, is that going down on the Masonry?
Yes, so we have a new sign at Burnham. I don't know if I stole your thunder, Julie, I know I was waiting for you. Julie has been instrumental in getting the Burnham sign, it is up, it is going. But we are also getting a new sign for Chapag. So it will have new Masonry work up there, so it is right in the front. So that will be forthcoming, yes.
Just one comment on that, too. I noticed driving in, those bushes are growing over.
The sign that we ordered actually incorporates a little garden to it. We figured it was a nice nod to agri-science. But yeah, we, we definitely have to clean up the landscape, and that was part of, I know Nicole is working with the sign, she's been coordinating these efforts, and landscaping was part of the consideration. Our schools are gems, we want them to shine, and the first impression is, is very important. So, we have looked at that. One thing, I don't know if you all noticed, when the alarm was beeping out there, it should also be shared with you. Chapag was struck by lightning. And it, it actually hit right outside next to the sign, which is what made me think about that when you said that. We actually saw the, we had to go on video, you see the lightning strike, strike down. We had to confirm with a meteorologist, he said it was 99% certain that it struck down after video footage in the burned area right next to the sign. I know, we, we are very confident, but it did impact some of our electric circuits. So, the, the good news for all of that is now we have a need to redesign that area. It has not been a dull moment, I'm not going to lie. So if there are no other questions about the superintendent's update, I just want to acknowledge some of our hires and, oh, go ahead, Pete. Okay, hiring for appointments. We welcome Logan Messina, who will be our English Language Arts teacher at Chapag Valley School. He will be at our middle school grades. Charles Ritter for mathematics at Chapag Valley School. Kimberly Schram will be our literacy tutor at Washington Primary School. And we do have a transfer, so Krista Lee Donovan will be a literacy tutor at WPS for this school year. So that concludes my updates. Logan Messina will be doing our middle school English Language Arts. The question about if there's any luck for a leader in AgCEN, the answer to that is right now, no. What we've come up with is a solution, we continue to look for a director of agri-science. So in the meantime, what we have done is that we are working with one of our agri-science teachers. She will be working with one of our administrators in order to help develop the program, establish systems. She will be considered a content coach for agri-science. So there is a stipend position in order to make certain that we are getting the orders. I, there is a lot of moving parts with agri-science. The logistics, it's not just about what's being taught in the classroom, it's the maintenance of the equipment, it's the animals, it's the movement of the animals, it's the supervision of the students and their student agri-science experience overseeing their internship hours, making certain that FFA and those, those activities are being satiated. So it's, it's not as simple as just a, here's your department head. So, that's our solution for the moment, but it's not a permanent solution, and it's not a total solution. Currently, we've looked in-state, we have not expanded our searches. We have talked to FFA about casting our net a little bit wider. It's, one of our challenges is not a shock to anybody. What makes us wonderful is that we are geographically isolated. What makes this hard is that we are geographically isolated. So, there are, we, we have asked, we have sought recruitment, but we have come up dry thus far. As I said, we've talked to FFA, we have not done the concerted effort, and that should be our next step for looking out of state. I, I completely agree. I think if we need to make certain that this is not just about creating something and getting it up and started, it's, our promise was to have a first-class program, and I think with that, it is the leadership that's going to matter as well. We have been very fortunate that everyone has been pitching in. You know, take it from, you know, Donna Larry managing the maintenance of some of the kitchen equipment in the Ag Kitchen, Nicole Grant making certain that the, all of the furniture and equipment is being ordered, trying to make certain she knows where to order the live crickets, I don't think that was on her resume. And then even taking our Chapag leadership, which unfortunately also takes away from some of the other initiatives. So we need to make certain that we are finding the leadership. One of the challenges going out of state is going to be getting them then certified within Connecticut. The good news is Connecticut will usually give grace for a year, but it is something that, in active recruitment, we are, we're struggling, so it is important that we cast a wider net. Yep. I, I absolutely agree, and when we look at, we've got very enthusiastic people who have done a wonderful job recruiting. But it's not just about recruiting, it's about keeping the students to come here. One of the things I don't ever want to be is false advertising. So we need to make certain that the students who come, stay, graduate with us. All of those things are important metrics to save the success of our program.
Okay, any other questions? Well, I want to congratulate you, Megan, on making sure that the lightning struck before you put the new sign up. That was well thought out. All right, I guess we'll move on to new business now. What we have is the presentation of our new policy manual.
Okay. Not like, okay, so, I, we're doing this in waves, so please know this is not your new policy manual. What we have shared with you is, this is Shipman Goodwin's model policy book. But now, it's different than K, because what you're going to see is what looks like it is a very thick book is also mostly regulations, too. So the difference is, is that a policy is the oversight, how, you know, how we have to govern. And this is what you determine what you set. Regulation is how our administrators need to practice that policy. So what you're going to see is not only just the policy, but also the regulation there with it. So what we've done tonight is that we have provided for you what is the policy, the model policies from Shipman and Goodwin. But what we're going to show you, and if you will indulge me for just one quick moment, I'm going to show you where we are moving towards. Okay. So, we made a decision at our last board meeting that we would no longer be working with CAEB for next school year. And CAEB's biggest draw for us was really the policies that we have been able to use in the website. And what we've been able to do, and when I say we, Debbie Bliven has been able to do, is she has created our policies in Google format. And part of the reason we use Google is because when you put that on the website, it is ADA compliant. Google documents allow the reader to be read to. So it takes into account anybody who may be visually impaired. This allows everyone access to our policies. But I want to pull for you just on the screen, so you can see. You see, when you click on the 1,000 series, there is the policies, and there's also the regulations. So looking under policies, I want you to see, and I'm just going to take one quick example. This is what it actually would look like on our website. And so, this is where we have personalized it to Region 12. So when you look at the model policy book here, it says Shipman Goodwin. If you go to the 1500s, this is what it looks like. However, we have then personalized, as you can see, it says, you know, the region, Regional School District 12 Board of Education. We make certain that we reference our own policies there within. So, we have gone through our entire policy book against the Shipman and Goodwin policy. We took their model policies, and that was our starting ground because it synthesizes. Our policies were getting quite overwhelming, and there was a lot of the policies that, we were making policies for things that were already in legislature. There, there's not a reason to make a policy when there's a law that already exists. However, some laws say you need to have policy. So, what we've done is we've now streamlined. The next step that we did after taking Shipman's is we went through our entire policy binder to see what Shipman didn't cover. So something Shipman does not cover is a tuition-in policy. That's ours, that's something that we have at this point refined. So we took any policies that were not considered and have not been, and we put in our current policies. So when you actually go to have what would be our first read, what we're going to do is over the summer, we are going to give you our actual policies that are complete and finished. And you will be able to see what is our policies that remain still versus what is the model policy. And putting that together, so that way, what we're looking to do is at the next board meeting, will be a first read to look through. At that point, you will have more than enough time, you will get the policies probably in another week or so. You'll be able to read through it. We'll be able to have comment on things that we need to go back with, so that way we will have a first read where you'll have had comments, which would then make the decision on whether or not we are going to wholesale the policies with our anchoring being the Shipman and Goodwin policies. As a reminder, the reason we moved to Shipman Goodwin versus CAEB was because Shipman is our legal counsel. There were many times our legal counsel was having to weigh in on CAEB policies, and we were paying twice for a policy. So this streamlines it. I think you're going to see, when you look at what will be our policies in totality, it will now be a third of the size, but still covering all of the topics that we want to make certain are part of this legislative body and your ability to govern. So, at this point, I'm going to just open it up to questions or concerns. I wanted to make certain you saw the process, I wanted to make certain you had the information as your foundation. Julie?
So do we start with this, or do we wait and get?
I would wait until you get, my stomach, okay, wait until you get the policies electronically. This is your reference.
So we take this with us?
You're going to take that with you, yes.
Okay.
Okay, don't do your homework yet, but put it in a place you will not forget.
You can't miss this, then.
Going to tell you, our current policies. So, yes, this is a goal, so this is setting the stage. I also wanted people to know the difference, because we don't typically share regulations with you. So this also gets you a chance to see how it takes from policy into practice. So it's good to see what Shipman had thought in its implementation, because I also think that helps you judge the merits of a policy. I think sometimes when you're looking at policies, it's a little bit more abstract versus thinking about what does that mean in practice.
And don't be intimidated, it used to take us 10, 20 years to get through our policies once. We used to do a couple of meetings, now you need to do the whole thing, one-shot. No pressure.
I just have to say, this is wonderful. Um, because after serving on the committee for policies, it was, it was very painful. So, I'm very happy to see this, and, and I think it's good for the board to read what our policies are, because it's, it's a good education for us to know, you know, how, how we govern. So, so this is fantastic, so thank you.
Again, this is one where I can tell you, I'm going to say Debbie Bliven one more time, because her and I met, and she was one every week, she's like, all right, sit down. But more than that, the organization, and I think the savings, and I think the ease of use when it actually gets onto our website and goes live. That said, our current policies remain on our website, they remain holding until we adopt in totality.
Other questions? All right. Well, I think that's it. So if no one has an objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned by consent at 8:30.